All right. As I mentioned, Chris Doscher is leading our enrollment. Wish we could be there, but we are here doing the good governance work today. And so look forward to a full meeting coming off of a number of strong productive committee meetings. So thank you all for taking part in those meetings last week. This is meant to be a report out of those meetings as well as some focused areas of discussion. So look forward to a good discussion tonight. As we usually do, we'll start things out with our mission moment, which is a fun one, an exciting one, an innovative one tonight. So we've done career day at the high school for a number of years now. This year there was a bit of change in that team and with that comes new ideas. And with that idea came, with that team came the idea of making our career day, a career speaker series over the course of a series of Mondays over the spring, which could easily expand into something beyond that. And so imagine being in high school and your college counselor inviting you in to meet folks who work in finance or folks who work in law or photography or sports management, you name it. And it's our job as a school to bring people in who would take pride and enjoy sitting with kids and tell them about what they do and how they got into it and how kids could perhaps get involved in it too. And so we've got a number of young professionals in finance on the left, speaking with a number of our kids two weeks ago and sharing just their experiences. As well as on the right, you see Mr. Warner in the light blue shirt. And then District Attorney in Brooklyn here and present and sharing with our kids what she does and why she loves her job. So I see this as being good, obviously for exposure and like giving kids a sense of this is possible and this is interesting. I want to learn more as they experience high school. And then I think as a community, it really helps to build a network of people who take pride in being a part of the school, want to give back, want to contribute and builds a team of supporters and a network for our kids in our school. So I see this as just the beginning. Sal's on, Sal sent me a note earlier today about someone who he knows who's interested in taking part in such a session. And so I invite you all to do the same. If you know of folks or you yourselves would like to be involved in a small group, Monday afternoon chat with some kids about what you do, would love that. And know that we'll reach out to you too, as we look to kind of build out a diverse array of experiences professionally that kids can can learn about. So mission moment tonight, feel good about that and excited about possibilities here as we grow it up. On the agenda tonight, which you all had your inbox on Monday. Fairly typical meeting, there's just a volume of stuff to to update, bring you the attention of the full board, et cetera, because right now we are moving into the fourth quarter of the year, believe it or not. So want to finish that year out strongly and that quarter out strongly as well as just the way in which schools work, you begin planning for the forthcoming year as well as the summer. And so we're doing both of those things right now. And for those who work in education, who have been on the sport for a while, you know what that entails. It's a lot. So expect there to be a lot coming at you today with regard to all the things we're doing. Moving into headlines for today, I'm going to break it up into academics, culture and climate, and then org health related updates. And so some of this is coming from the SLC meeting last week. Some of it's coming from development and governance as well as audit and finance. So here we are. And Melissa may chime in here and there as she sees updates that I don't cover. Ram's entering the scene. So I think from an academic standpoint, just before this meeting, we were talking about testing and all the things going on here in New York. Our kids are now preparing for their exams in the coming weeks at the middle school. And so for us, that involves just test prep, some good review work, some good intervention work happening, focused on courses where we're seeing perhaps gains that are not in line with what we want. And so a couple of focus areas there as well as celebrating where there's a lot of wins and growth being seen. And so there was a big assembly today, a pep rally at the middle school where we're celebrating just effort and pride and some recent successes with regards to kids showing off some things they've learned this year. So overall feel good about things and speaking with the principal. Two days ago, she said, team feels strong right now, the vibe feels good. And so that's a good place to be at this time of the year. At the high school, we're in a, in a strong testing place and like strong like family communication space in that we have IAs, the third round going on right now at our high school. We had SATs and PSATs happening last week. We've got a day to day in which our staff are looking at IA three results and analyzing the results and action planning those results this week as well as conferences happening on Thursday night and Friday. So busy, busy time, we're doing it all at once this year to see how that goes. And so that's just the run of show at the high school right now.
And today we finished, we wrapped.
Wrapped up.
Practicing for the year after this, it's just a big game. You know, it's, it's, it's season, it's the season now. So that's it. Tomorrow's our day to day.
And so for us, that involves AP exams, around 10 of them next month, as well as Regents exams coming up in June. So in addition to that, we've got college acceptances rolling on in. I think the latest update is that we're waiting on five coming from CUNY ASAP any day now. And once we get those, we'll have some numbers to report out. Last year we had a hundred percent of students earn acceptance into a college. And so we're excited to report out on those findings quite soon. In addition to that, just a quick note on this. So Alumni Success Council, you all know that we do this. It's a special part of our school. That's also going on as kids finish up their, their second semester of college. Some in their first year, some in their third year, some in their fourth year. And that work is ongoing and I know I get to speak with our counselors every two weeks on Friday afternoons. And it's just great to hear the way in which they're individually supporting kids with their individual needs and their nuanced needs in many cases. And like coming in to save the day in some cases. And so I think it's a great resource. Similarly, in speaking with foundations recently on the development front, I have found and Eric has found that like, there's a lot of interest in this area among foundations and in the cause of post-secondary success and preparation. And so I feel like this is a secret muscle of our school and one that has really impacted kids positively. And I want to bring this out. So we're going to talk a bit about profile here and there tonight. And I think this is a special area where bringing more spotlight into it. Its impact would benefit us on all fronts. So I'm excited by the work they're doing that continues as kids close out their second semester. That is academics and those are some of the headlines happening. On the culture and climate front, lots of festivities happening as you see on the screen here. A few to shout out. Our girls varsity basketball team won their conference, conference champions, as you see on the right, last month. So just, that's a school pride thing. Kids are proud, it's a great experience. We had four or five other basketball teams in the mix this season, all made the playoffs, including my, my varsity boys team. So that's exciting. And if you've been involved in team sports, team activities, you know how impactful that can be in your own experiences and working with others as even an adult. And so a couple of things I want to, I want to just tout here. So in looking at some of the data and anecdotal evidence recently, when kids are on teams and in season, so thinking about basketball, for example. And we're talking about 15% of our student body with just, just basketball and more like 30 to 40% of our kids in a given athletic season. There are notable increases and improvements in grades during those times in which they're engaged in that sport because they found that passion, that thing they're interested in, that thing that kind of like makes them want to be their best. Same with attendance, same with punctuality and same with conduct. And so just, just kids are just generally like proud of a team they're on when they're in season. And so in thinking about profile of school and who we are, there's so much learning that goes on in the classroom as well as on the playing field. And I think I'm seeing that with some of the pride that our teams are showing now and in recent past. So I want to tout that. In addition to that, and similarly, we had a huge dance recital at our middle school last month. Over 106, seventh and eighth graders onstage dancing. Raise your hand if you'd volunteer to do that here. I didn't think so, right? And so kids are doing that work, they're showing off their stuff, they're gaining confidence, they're, they're, they're taking pride in learning new things and then showing it off to an audience of peers, parents, et cetera. So we had a standing room only at our auditorium with parents in front, with cameras up, phones up, taking pictures. It was great in it. So a couple of things I just want to note with regard to culture and climate that are happening. Finally, conferences of middle school took place a couple of weeks ago. We had 77% of our families in participation, which is right on par with what we want to see. Conferences at the high school are happening tomorrow and Friday. Want the same sort of results there. Conferences at the high school are a bit different in that they're student led. Maybe we'll do that at the middle school someday, almost there, but that's where we are. That is culture and climate, a few updates. And then finally, oh, we had a pie day. Math pie, P I. Two weeks ago and a number of our staff on the right here photo volunteered to actually enjoy the festivities, talk a bit about the magic of pie as well as get pie. And so that's why they're dressed up with goggles and a suit. There's some footage on social media if you want to check that out. But kids had some fun in being able to politely take a pie to one of their teachers. So org health wise, you see a long list because it's a busy time of year for us. Some of the same report outs that I usually offer in terms of enrollment, fairly steady. Lottery happened on 4-1. I mentioned we're now busy enrolling students, including an event tonight. Our eighth grade retention efforts continue. And I'll say right now, like we put in a lot of effort and more effort than we have in the past this year. And while I think there's been some progress on the input front and ideas, we're not seeing that result in a whole lot of additional students enrolling as of now in our high school from our middle school. So there's work to do here, but I think this is something that we're focused on and wanting to continually improve in. And so right now that, that is an area of growth and improvement for us. And I think the actions are just around individual conversations and counseling with families about their plans for next year. On the positive front, a number of our kids have gotten into terrific schools and other high schools in New York and have aspirations and interests in special areas where schools may offer that. And at the same time, we offer a really good option for kids at Unity High. And so our interest is in making sure that we're meeting kids exactly where they are and firing them up about Unity High is an option. So that's where things stand there. Other things worth noting. We're going to say a bit about our draft budget for 25, 26, a bit later in the meeting. In terms of like staffing and org chart related stuff at both sites and our school overall, there have been some, some shifts. And so those are being orchestrated as we move into next year, conversations happening. We've got spring reviews in process, offers for the next coming year being made in a number of areas. Hiring season is in the mix. We've made some hires over the past month and have a number of strong candidates in the pipeline right now. Building renovations are being managed, few updates there a bit later on. And then we have our authorizer and Jen Marsh, our liaison, visiting us on the 7th and 8th of May coming up. So we're planning for that. So lots of stuff going on in addition to all the things academically and extracurricularly and culturally that were discussed already. So busy time of year, if you haven't realized that already. Based on what I've said and presented, team who heard some of this last week or others who are here, hearing this for the first time, any questions or comments, things you want to underline, question, tout, et cetera. Cool. So we have a common sense of what is going on at school over the course of the last month, moving into April. Let's talk a bit about data and our dashboard at the governance level. And so what you see here is a snapshot or a summary of, of the various metrics we tend to look at, review each month where we are and whether we're currently meeting or have met that area of school, that metric partially or on watch with that metric or currently not meeting. Not a whole lot of significant change here, but a little bit of movement from current to partial and back and forth. And so anything worth highlighting on either of those fronts, I'll say a bit more in a moment. And I think some of the usual suspects or challenges with regards to currently not meeting. And so those are similar to what we've seen before. I'll say a bit more about student recruitment because there's some nuance there momentarily. Let's move into the data. I'll make this a bit bigger so you can see it. Feel free to open it up on your screen too, if you like. And we'll go through it. Everything in green along the left column represents updates. So a number of updates coming to you this month. Enrollment fairly steady, course path rate, pass rates, nothing worth bringing to the full board tonight. They were discussed at the committee level last week. With interim assessments, we talked about that a bit ready, a bit, a bit already. We're moving into test prep. We're in test prep at the middle school and just finished up IAs at the high school. We'll have data on IAs at the high school next month. At the middle school right now, a focus area for us is eighth grade math. And we're in good form of a number of areas, including sixth grade and seventh grade math. And Melissa, would you say anything more about interim assessments and test prep at the middle schools as we move into getting ready for these exams?
As we get ready for exams, we engage in weekly quizzes that allow us to look at the priority standards and how kids are doing on those. Most of these are moving directionally where we want them to go. There's some seventh grade numbers that are a little bit more stagnant. But that gives us a smaller snapshot, though it doesn't contextualize, you know, the entirety of the exam, taking it across multiple days, et cetera. So we're feeling good about our cycles this year. And to the degree that they are predictive, are, are hopeful that we'll have a strong year, especially in Eli.
Thank you for that, Melissa. Moving down to other data points here, student attrition update there. I think we're on track in the sixth grade, in the middle school with 6% of our students as of now moving in and out of the school. And so I think if we have students moving out right now, the trend has been that we're having students then backfill or come in and join our school. And it's been fairly consistent as enrollments remained at about 500 over the year. And so I think we're on track to meet our mark of no less than 10% there. The high school, we, there's been an uptick over the past two months. We're at 9% now. I think 10th grade is where we've seen more attrition at 11%. I want to look at that data in more nuanced form before reporting out fully what's going on here. So expect to report out next month, but we are monitoring that as of now and have been. Financially, we'll have more to report out a bit later, but we're meeting all four metrics there as of the end of February. School attendance, not a lot of change, 1985 across the two sites. Not a lot of change amongst suspension either. We talked about that before. It's held steady at the high school and at the middle school over the past month. Student recruitment wise, here's where we are. We have the lottery and as of the lottery, 192 applications for sixth grade. Our goal was 230, so we did meet that goal. That's why it says not met. At the same time, we did collect more applications this year than last year. So I'll say a bit more about that when we get into the committee meetings. So didn't meet our goal of 230, ambitious but reasonable. We're up on last year's number of applications in, in the sixth grade, seventh grade. Also wanted 200, got to 142, 145 last year. So we're three down from last year. We'll say a bit more about that later on. There's some nuance there. Vacancies, not allowed to report. We're ending the year, we're covering internally. Trustee participation, thank you for being who you are and being here tonight. Development wise, $208,000 committed to school as of this year, 192 last month. We're behind where we want to be at this point in the year. I'll say more about that during the development report out. And I've already talked about conferences at the middle school regarding family participation. Extracurriculars, I've said a few words about right now in the spring season. We're looking at numbers and percentages of participation that are in line with higher than the winter, lower than the fall. That's fairly typical. Fall's our biggest season, but that's where things stand. With clubs, when you count clubs and athletics, we are meeting the mark of having at least 40% of our kids take part in after school activities at Unity. So an extended day for them. And finally, with sped compliance, things are in good form at the middle school. Waiting some data at the high school. I'll report that out next month. Are there questions about what is here? Cool. Just to have a sense, here are some action steps that we're taking part in generally. Again, we're in April, moving into May and June. And so for areas where we're partially meeting or on watch, I've offered action steps for those items and what we're currently focused on. And for areas where we're not meeting, I've also offered those next steps. See if a sense of what the, what the actions are in looking to make improvements and meet where we are currently almost or not meeting. In some cases here, I'll just, I'll say it like with regard to enrollment, we're not going to get up to our goal of this year, but we're looking to stay steady. And so in that case, for example, we're looking to continually backfill when we have seats available. I think there were two students coming into our school this week, even at this point in the year. And so that's what we'll do, that's what we have to. As you look this slide over, if you've got specific questions, happy to feel them. If you've got ideas, things that perhaps you'd add, happy to see those too. Okay, I'm going to move us forward then. We're going to jump into committee report outs tonight. First committee report out, student learning happened last Thursday. Productive meeting, thank you all for taking part. We, tonight, so for items, here's what we discussed on Thursday fully. We're going to talk about most of these items tonight in different forms. So student highlight that may have been there, maybe a bit different than what we presented out tonight. In any case, headlines have been provided tonight. And Melissa's going to talk a bit about interim, I'm sorry. Course offerings, not what's here under item four, that is incorrect. Am I looking at the right thing? I am. So number four slash that, we're going to talk a bit about course offerings at the high school, provide a quick update there, which was discussed in length at the committee level. And then we'll talk about what we're forecasting retention wise with staff based on communication thus far. Let me hand things over to Melissa.
Hi all, and apologies for any interruptions. There's, we're fostering some productive struggle in my home as my youngest learns to make her own mac and cheese. So the one thing we discussed as a student learning committee is talking about a course trajectory. So thinking about what are kids learning? How does that meet our model? We've talked across years, across this year and others about the number of course offerings. Are they appropriately matched? Are they strong? So we have a few focused shifts we're making this year. And we know that this will be a multi-year shift as the New York State portrait of a graduate and Unity's version of that solidifies over the next couple of years. But when possible, we're seeking to do two things. One, simplifying trajectories across time and having them lead to logical, high rigor culminating coursework. So you know, does a science class lead to an AP or something that's very performance based ultimately, that builds upon the knowledge that one would learn in biology and physics and chemistry? So similar with all subject areas. So one of the things we're doing is reducing the number of advanced math courses and moving to just AP and, and move to AP, AP statistics instead of AP calculus. So this year we had an accelerated algebra two and a pre-calc class and an AP pre-calc class, which is just a pre-calc class. We're reducing those numbers and focusing on AP pre-calc. Additionally, we know we haven't been super successful with AP calculus. And it doesn't actually align with many of our, our students' trajectories. They're not hoping to be math majors, but many of them do want to be in STEM fields, in social sciences. So we are introducing that class as that culmination. We're also reducing one science AP course to give a clearer like pipeline and trajectory for kids so that they build upon year over year. And then we're also looking to bolster our opportunities to demonstrate high school ready rigor at the middle school. So that's our other area, that eighth grade year that seemed high school. So we're introducing a high school level US history course and earth, it should say earth and space science. It's had a rebrand this year at our middle school so that we can tout the number of high school ready opportunities that kids have. And then that opens up doors for our kiddos once they reach high school because they can take some more rigorous, in-depth or specialized coursework. There's some embedded initiatives in there in choosing these courses. One is aligning our history courses across sites to pursue the seal of civic readiness. That's kind of a stamp that's going to go on diplomas as New York simplifies down to one diploma type and sundown some of the Regents requirements. Seals will be one way that students can graduate and to show preparedness to colleges and post-secondary options. So that's one will be, that's well suited to Unity and that we'll be pursuing for next year. We're also going to move towards a structure where all students are eligible for an AP capstone diploma as an AP for all school. That's a big thing we do. We, we love our bronze awards, we love our access awards more than that. AP seminar is a really wonderful course we've offered as an elective in the past. But that is a course that prioritizes writing, presentation, group work and analysis and little R research. And we see that growing into also offering AP research across years. That'll allow students to have an AP capstone opportunity, which looks a little bit more like an IB diploma in some ways. And we're looking at offering that as our 11th grade course. The college board tells that is the major access course that every kid can take. So that feels like a great fit for our school. And I have an enthusiastic teacher. We sat down and chatted about that one today. Questions from the team about these headline trajectories. Embedded in the deck are the more granular scopes across years if folks want to see those. One thing we're still chewing on and Juliana gave us some good feedback and some push is really thinking about the more electives facing opportunities and what that can look like at scale at our high school. We've had some opportunity with staffing shift this year to dig into that at the middle school level. But that feels like there was some, some good push that perhaps it should be backwards built from our high school. And we agree there and see that across the near term with both shifts at the New York State level with opportunities that exist in for our kids who are, what's the term we're using now? Digital natives, kids who grew up ensconced in this, this digital rich world, that there are probably a lot of really smart ways that we can do that. We saw some mentorship from nearby schools. So that'll be the next phase of, of what I'll present soon.
Thank you, Melissa. Some exciting stuff here as we think about aligning middle school to high school more directly. And then also creating more buzz and more academic pride and excitement in our high school offerings, whether it's the SEAL, the capstone diploma, AP stats, a great course. Jim, I'm sure you're a fan of that. And yeah, creating some buzz. And so I think we discussed this general idea of like profile and what are we doing to excite and engage kids in high school academia broadly in both the SLC meeting as well as with the AFC meeting on Friday. So some themes here are coming across different committees, having similar conversations. Melissa's now going to move forward and provide a quick update just on action planning based on a retention survey and some communication we've had with staff at both sites over the course of the past two months.
Yeah, so I've leaned in a little bit more to our human capital work this year. I know several other folks shoulder that as well. So I'm going to talk first about our intent return survey. This is what we gave to staff to begin forecasting and getting a pulse. One, how's our staff doing? Do they like it here? And two, do they intend to stay? Because sometimes it's, it's yes and no, but hopefully usually it's yes and yes. So in a given year, we aim to retain about 80% of our staff. That's 80% of our staff who choose to stay with us and 80% of our staff we, we choose to retain. This, last year, like for this school year, 81% of our team said that they wanted to come back for the 24, 25 school year. And then 67% did return. That was different than, than the year prior where we had 78 to 74. So that 67 is really what I should have bolded, but there was a pretty big delta there and we're looking to course correct for this year. We did survey staff and had conversations with that. So between surveying and a couple of conversations where maybe somebody said maybe no, and then we're like, wait, 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 never mind. That's a definite yes for me. Right now, our best estimate is 80% with an asterisk. That's an 80%, though I think that we will drop that rate on purpose. We will drop that rate. We, as you know, we have a We will drop that rate. We, as you know, we have a transition, a principal transition happening, another leader transition happening. And there may be some folks who um, in that transition, we are deciding are not going to be um, a right fit and a right return. And that's okay. So we may end up reporting a little bit more than eighty percent, but right now around eighty is a, a little less than that eighty percent. Eighty percent is our best guess. There are some next steps, including offer letters going out this week to most team members, those who are not receiving them. Either know they're not receiving them because they have um, uh, unique circumstances. Hey, you just started two weeks ago. We're not sending this out yet. Or hey, like we are in the middle of discussing the reality of your role this year. It doesn't make sense to send this out right in the middle of those discussions. So yours, yours is definitely coming. We just don't know what it says. But there's another group who we say, hey, we need to see some changes before this goes off. So outside of those, they're going up this week. We'll have follow-up conversations um, about positions. And we will be continuing um, the good work of hiring, which is really hard right now. Um, there's um, a number of folks who express interest in a position, but perhaps don't show up to the job interview, et cetera. So hiring is in strong form at our middle school. We do have two vacant roles. We are getting um, um, we are getting references for one of those roles and are likely to make an offer. And then we have a strong pipeline for the other role. Um, outside of that, we are um, forecasting that we're good to go. And in another week after we turn, return from break, we'll know about any other um, any other vacancies. The current estimated number is fifteen, uh, which is fewer than last year, but for fewer seats and um, is concentrated heavily at the high school, even based on what we know now. So there is still some good work to do, but um, at least the work is clear. The path forward is clear.
But I would like So there, uh, Josh, you sent an article around about this issue, the hiring challenges and, and the new rules about staffing. So Melissa, how are we like in terms of pupils per teacher? Are we meeting the new guidelines or?
Yeah, so we generally are meeting the new guidelines. We have till twenty twenty-eight to, to be firmly meeting those guidelines. And right now we would be a little bit over in rooms with that. As a charter school, we do have a little bit of leniency. Uh, and because our model is so heavily ICT, we also have just a much higher ratio um, and could consider concentrating um, the numbers uh, more highly. It's not my choice, but um, in the room so that the ratios still remain um, favorable.
And there was a, a link in that article to a program where they're providing additional funding to people who want to hire more. I went to that. Looks like it's uh, interesting, but problematic at some level to apply for that.
Yeah.
Looked at that.
I have not dug, uh, dug deeply into that. I think um, the, the pipeline programs have benefits and drawbacks. And right now what we're doing is solidifying some of the um, strong coaching work that would be required to have newer folks come on. I came on through pipeline program, Josh did as well. Um, so they can be really
Well, I think this is something, if this was providing additional funds for teachers, if you wanted to meet those ratios.
Yeah, I have to look into that one a little bit more. I think right now, um, the, the um, we're struggling to meet the hiring demands and um, the um, the, the numbers um, with, with even current ratios. So the additional humans on top of that, um.
Yeah, there's some city program setup where they would provide additional funds to pay for the additional teachers if you weren't meeting your ratios.
Yeah.
And um, I just read what was sent around, but yeah, it's interesting, but there's some complications that you can see in that article.
Yeah, no, I, I think I'm glad you mentioned that, Jim. Maybe, I want to mention three points. I think this is an important topic. Obviously, people and, and the talent of our team is, is integral to like what students experience in school. So a couple of things. First, uh, no one mentioned the sixty-seven percent at the top. Not like that was our retention rate last year. That is not solid, like that needs to improve. And so I'll just sort of say that. And you'll notice there was a spread between what we had thought and then what we ended up with. And so I think a question then is what are we doing this year differently so that that sixty-seven is more like eighty this year? And there are a couple of things happening on site that I'm proud of right now. Um, one is we're planning sooner, so we have a better sense of exactly what positions are. And then we're communicating those ideas and visions out with team members selectively sooner than we have in the past. So people are then set up to begin to think about, all right, cool. What would this look like next year? Think that happened later than usual last year and that was not good for team. In addition to that, I think I've got two leaders at both sites right now for next year who are jumping into those conversations very directly and honestly. And that bodes well for just overall organizational health in the school, any entity for that matter. And so because of those conversations, I think there's been more clarity, more trust, more communication happening. And that um, is what, what people want to follow and, and be a part of. So um, I think those two things are really good for us. So we're doing it sooner. We're planning more effectively and the communication is stronger. So I see that number improving this year. In addition, enrollment wise, uh, we are not planning for five hundred and forty-five students like we had two years ago. We're thinking more about five hundred-ish, which is where we are now. And so that will allow for us to um, to be efficient and, and make sure that we've got exactly what we need, given the kids we have and the demand we have for um, uh, um, the education we're providing. And so I think with that, um, we will be uh, determining some spaces where we may not have as many sections as we've had in the past. Um, and that makes sense while maintaining class sizes that are similar to where we've been. So that's just what schools have had to do over the years and we're in that situation moving into next year. And so we're thinking about that. And we'll make decisions that are best given our mission as a school and um, the resources we have. Finally, there to Jim's point, um, so I, I, I think the article came out, if you didn't see that, essentially the headlines are there are class sizes across the city where there are too many kids in classes and not enough adults in rooms. We're pretty good in the ratio front. We're probably at twenty-three, twenty-four students at our middle school per class and probably around the same at the high school, which is significantly less than what you might see in other schools. So we staff well and generously um, in honor of kids and the attention that they deserve to have. With that, so we're not kind of in a position where we, we're pressured to like hire up more to work with big class sizes because we were built on small class sizes. At the same time, the demand for teachers as the DOE looks to increase, the number of teachers they have on staff will increase. And that puts some pressure on then just the market for educators. And so it's a competitive market already as Melissa has described. Um, and so I, I can say right now, there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion or communication around like the demand of the DOE impacting our pool as of yet directly. And typically, and maybe unfortunately, what tends to happen is hiring within the DOE starts up later in the spring and early summer. So we may sense some of that. And so we should get ahead of it by thinking about just um, the number of folks we're bringing in, the communication we have. And then the way in which we're enticing them to really, really be a part of our, our community. And so um, I think those are the factors at play right now as we think about how the demand for DOE teachers in New York City picks up and the impact it may have on us. And it's really just about us preparing for maybe some, some um, additional conversations uh, later this year as people begin to weigh options.
And I would say as, as a rule, we're um, from a ratio perspective, we're talking about two to three kids over in just a few sections at our middle school and none at our high school. Um, so, and the ones with two to three over are often um, um, uh, the ratios are favorable. These are things that we could balance. Um, though again, uh, reducing sections in order to um, uh, continue to run our program as strongly as we can is something that may complicate that.
Final, final thoughts on this topic before we move on. All right, good discussion. Let's then move into the next committee shareout, which would be the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, you see the agenda from last Friday on the screen. We're going to talk about three items today in this meeting. One is just an approval item. We'll get to that momentarily. Um, Kristen's going to provide, Kristen will say maybe three to five minutes of an update on where we are in preparing the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six and some of the factors at play. And then um, I'll stand in for Chris in reporting out where things stand recruitment wise, moving into enrollment um, with him at the enrollment dinner tonight. So I think with that, Kristen, I'll hand things over to you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna share my screen if I can.
You're in. Okay, yeah, let's do that. All right. Unshare. You've got co-host access.
Thank you. Okay, um, so in regards to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, um, as was mentioned, we are moving forward with the enrollment, projected enrollment of five hundred, which is approximately where we're at um, as of today with our current enrollment. Um, we do have an estimated per pupil increase that we've received from the Charter School Center of four point seven percent. Uh, we'll get that final number um, sometime in early to mid-May. We're projecting to get that number. Um, if things pro- prog- progress as they did last year, um, hopefully this number will not change too significantly. Um, we are being a little conservative when it comes to the federal funding, which is our special ed funding, which is IDEA. Um, and our federal funding, we are keeping that flat to our actual this year. Um, and then lease assistance is following in suit with how we've handled that in the past. The thirty percent of our high school enrollment um, is typically that amount. Um, we also are looking into a safety security grant um, that is new to charter schools. Um, it has been available to non-public schools in the past, but it has now been expanded to charter schools. So we're still learning about that, but we are anticipating around forty-nine thousand dollars to help support one of our safety and security positions at the high school. Um, from an expenditure standpoint, we are kind of working forward on this with an estimate of three percent increase on salaries. Insurance, we still are working with our providers to get um, solid numbers on that. So we have a ten percent placeholder in right now. Um, and then other expenses are looking, are being looked at from line item to line item. So those increases range in some cases down to zero and up to five percent. Um, and then our facilities costs are in line with our lease agreements for both the lot at the high school and the high school and our trailers at the high school. Um, so we are projecting our expenditures to be about seventeen point six million. And I'm sorry, I didn't highlight that in the revenue, about sixteen point one million of revenues. So overall, where does that put us? Um, it puts us with a deficit of one point five five million. Um, for those of you on the AFC committee, you've heard we talk about this rate of use entry that we're required to make, which is strictly an accounting entry. It is not a cash entry. Um, so to help us compare apples to apples, we're going to pull that number out um, and also our depreciation number. So to compare apples to apples, we're looking at about a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar net income compared to six hundred and twenty thousand with our current budget. We do have some next steps where we need to refine our building budgets, um, our chief academic officer budget. Melissa and I were just talking about that before the meeting. Um, and then like I said, still working on some of those larger ticket items like insurance um, and busing. Um, and continuing to review staffing as Melissa and Josh have indicated. So that's where we are with the budget. Uh, we will provide the proposed final budget at May.
Members of the AFC, would you add anything?
No, nothing, no.
Great, thank you for that, Kristen. And we'll move on to the second um, major discussion point of the AFC call on Friday. Let me reshare my screen. So uh, recruitment. So as I mentioned, we had our lottery last uh, on the first of, of April. We have events going on now. So we spent um, Friday's call just providing an update and where things stand and a bit of an analysis broadly on um, the, the trend and terrain within recruitment and enrollment um, across both sites. So I'm going to share out that now. Um, I'll go a bit faster than we did on Friday, but pause me, stop me if you've got clarifying questions. So to give you a sense of how things ended up lottery wise and how many students and families applied to our school as of the lottery date. Um, what you'll see here is some comparables to past years. The last column in the right offers um, where we were this year. Big numbers here. We had a hundred and ninety-two applications, as I mentioned earlier, for our sixth grade. You'll see how that compares. It's up on two years ago, the past two years. And it's lower than we were in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, we had enrollment of one hundred and ten-ish students at the beginning of twenty-two, twenty-three. And so this was a really healthy year for us. And we've been at about eighty-five or so the past two years, eighty, eighty-five. So we're kind of getting a sense of how applications then translate ultimately into um, enrollees. And that gives you a sense of things. One thing which Chris did, which I think is helpful, is he also looked at common applications versus families and students specifically applying to Unity. Um, and we found that common applications um, tend to not to result in the same sort of yield as an uncommon application, if you want to call it that. And so I say that because five percent of our applications this year were through the common app. Um, that's significantly lower than we were, we were, we were two or three years ago. And so that's a good thing. So when we cross out or eliminate common applications from the mix, we ended up at a hundred and eighty-three applications this year. And you'll see how that compares to the prior three years. So we're closer to twenty-two, twenty-three, once getting rid of common applications. I think that's a good thing. Um, and there's continued work to do. Questions there? Uh, would the AFC offer any other nuances or context? I'll move things on to our ninth grade now. So we just looked at sixth. Here's ninth, same data. Um, a hundred and forty-two applications, slightly lower than this past year, lower than twenty-three, twenty-four and lower than twenty-two, twenty-three. When looking at common applications, there are more high school families that typically apply through common applications than among middle school families. And so you'll see that's the case when looking at the historicals here. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had sixty-five percent of our families apply through the common app. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had over half of our families apply through the common app this year, just over a quarter. When eliminating common applications, which again, don't often lead to students ultimately coming to our school. Um, they may be applying through the common app from the Bronx or Staten Island or somewhere where um, Williamsburg is not a convenient option for them. But it's really easy to apply, so why not? When eliminating those common applications, we get to a hundred and four, which is higher than we've had the past three years. And so that's good and there's work to do. So um, those uh, data points I think are valuable in giving us a sense of where we are versus where we've been and how we maneuver moving forward. Um, so general findings, I think we've provided most of these here. Generally, we were up when looking at non-common applications over this year. And I think just as a side note, um, we, we, we have um, had uh, in a couple of cases, um, family members leaving our middle school in the eighth grade. And this was for moving purposes. So it was about a family moving to another area in Brooklyn and this being a convenient option. But they enrolled in another big charter network without there being a waitlist. So I think just generally, we aren't the only school that's sort of like thinking about um, how to best attract as many students and families as we can and serve them well. So um, others are also thinking about these things and um, have seats um, uh, for, for families who wish to uh, attend their schools. Um, alumni, so we also, in addition to looking at that, at that recruitment data for this year to give you a sense of where we stand now. And I think the work now is in um, uh, engaging with these families that have applied and been admitted. And that happens through a dinner like the one we have tonight, direct contact, communication via text, phone calls, et cetera. And so um, we're doing this as other schools are. And then beginning now to cultivate a relationship. Um, and so we have round tables in June. We love to invite our kids who are coming to our school to those presentations, to get a sense of what we do and our kids. And um, that's a nice event. And so things like that happening where we're, we're keeping families in the loop. Our weekly newsletter also goes out to these families. Um, so they have a sense of what um, kids at our school and families at our school experience over the course of a given week. So I think with all of that, um, in looking at eighth grade and our alumni, uh, I guess a month ago, a month or two ago, um, I think it was Jim inquired about, hey, where, where are kids going if they're not going Unity High? Our eighth graders, that is. And so Chris did a bit of analysis and this is what he came up with. So I'm going to share some of the headlines here. And um, AFC folks, chime in if I miss anything that is, is of, of value. So in looking at eighth grade alumni over the past two years that did not attend our high school, that's a hundred and four kids. They enrolled in over sixty different unique high schools. My takeaway there is that like, that's a lot of schools for a hundred and four kids. That's an average of less than two kids going to a different school. So there isn't like a, a small collection of schools that kids are going to, if not us. Second, twenty-two percent of our kids um, went to other charter schools. Good note. Um. Second, twenty-two percent of our kids, um, went to other charter schools, good note, um, and so, um. Uh, we'll, we'll hold that in pocket for a moment, and then beyond that, the most popular schools of our alumni who didn't attend our high school. My high school is the most popular, but of the others, um, Bedford Academy, which is down the street in Bed-Stuy. And Midwood, which, um, both of these schools are somewhat selective, but you look at the sample sizes here, we're talking about four kids each. So, sixty different schools, four students each at the most, um, uh, high-volume schools. For our alumni who don't attend Unity High, there's a whole lot of spread here, so I actually think of that as being encouraging, it's about us kind of grabbing the attention of our students and saying, wait. Let's, uh, let's talk seriously about, um, what, um, what we offer, how amazing the experience is gonna be and how we team up. In addition to that, Chris also looked at the schools themselves and began thinking about criteria, um, and the factors at play and. Potentially families' decisions around high school, and so you'll see the schools here, um, in twenty-twenty-three, we had a. Four-year graduation rate of eighty-one point five, no, that was a low mark for us, um, but it is what it is when looking at apples-to-apples comparisons here, and so. Chris was able to look at the schools that had a four-year graduation rate above that and below that, and so you see those schools listed here. Um, and so. Bedford and Midwood are here, obviously, along with a number of other schools across the city, but. I think my takeaway here is that, like, there are a lot of schools on these lists. I should say that as a school right now, given the resources we have, all of our resources that go to academic counseling are at our high school. And within college and career success, and so we offer some. Resources with regard to counseling here, but modestly to our middle school students, and so the intention for us is. We have an amazing high school coming to our high school, um, there isn't the counseling beyond that, that, um, perhaps other middle schools have. Again, all of our resources, given what we have, goes to our high school kids and then thinking about college and career. So, um, Chris also, in addition to looking at grad rates, looked at distance, and Chris's sense anecdotally is that distance does matter. And so in thinking about public transportation, it takes about forty-one minutes to get from our high school to our middle school. Me traveling by bike takes fourteen minutes, so I guess we gotta get some kids some bikes, make it happen, um, and by car, it's about twenty-five minutes. So it gives you a sense of things, when looking at the other schools that were on that list of sixty, you'll see the way they break up, but. Um, a majority of the schools are closer to our middle school than our high school, so worthy note, good to think about. Stop me again if you have questions or insights here, trying to get some, some, some value, maybe come to some ideas about what, um, how we approach things. So the final slide here in comparisons looks at, uh, just a snapshot or profile of Unity High on the left. Along with the main other schools that kids attended over the past two years. Benjamin Bannaker, Bedford Academy, and Science, Technology and Research, Early College, High School, Atarasmus. Again, low number of students in absolute form, five, three, and three, um, but you get a sense of how we compare. Um, we are the second furthest from our middle school in comparison to the other schools, we are smaller, Ben- Ben- Benjamin Bannaker has eight hundred and thirty-nine kids. A big school, lots of offerings there, we're the smallest of the mix. Graduation rate, we talked about, um, lower in this year than the other schools, I don't know that that's the case in other years, probably comparable. I know in a few years it's very comparable to Bedford. Um, AP courses, we offer ten, the bigger school, Bannaker, offers twenty, there's some specialized majors at Bedford and Atarasmus. That kids may gravitate to, that are kinda cool, um, we don't have that yet, but when Melissa presented a moment ago. Uh, we talked about some of the things that we do offer as we think about seals at our high school, um, the idea of majors at our high school moving forward. And so this gets into some of the things other schools seem to be offering that we should be offering too. Um, we do have a college now program at the school, but it's perhaps smaller than some of the other programs here, you'll note that Bedford has a dual credit program. With Medgar Evers and with Saint Joe's College, um, kids can attend. College courses at local colleges at our school too, but it's not touted, I would. Um, say, uh, in maybe the same way that some of these schools are doing so, um, and so. Again, thinking about profile, there's some, there's, there's a path here and some opportunities to, to build it up.
Yeah, I would add that, Amisha, I think even you asked this once, do you have college now, and we have a specific partnership with college now, for example. College Now, of course, is a New York City program, and any New York City child is allowed, um, to attend that program. But some schools present it, I think, more, um, more personally than we have, so that's another op- opportunity that's a, a bud for us.
So kids can take college courses as AP exams at our school and through local colleges. And there's work that we can do in kind of building that up and making sure it's known, recognized, and celebrated. Um, athletically, I think we do a good job per student at our school, but like, there's room, there's room to kind of build it up, and athletics matter, whether it's in college or in high school or in middle school, like. These activities bring pride to a community, and so, um, that in addition to extracurricular clubs makes a difference, and so. I think as a small school, we gotta think creatively, um, perhaps through partnerships, um, and additional resources and making. Um, as many experiences available to our kids as possible. The Career Speaker Series, we mentioned at the front end of this meeting, being one example of the way in which we might do that. So, that's where we ended things, um, on Friday, and a few ideas that came out of the group. Discussion with the AFC, um, for, um, uh, further, uh. Uh, engaging our middle school students in Unity High, um, is perhaps, um. At a technical level, offering busing or transportation, um, and thinking about that, that commute time, uh, from our middle school to our high school. Um, expanding academic counseling came up for our eighth grade, um, more cross-site events and initiatives. Mentoring among, uh, high school to middle school being one possible example of that. And then building our profile with our courses, our programming, pre-college, extracurriculars, et cetera, so. That was the initial sort of like discussion among members of the board with regard to where we are now, where we wanna be, and what we do about it. So I think with that, um, if folks have any, any, uh, other ideas or ideas that were passed on, they'd like to underline, um. Please, uh, uh, let's open it up.
Uh, I think, um, what's surfacing for me is like that storytelling piece, like, we keep coming back to. Uh, what is the, the story of where Unity Prep is coming from? And what is the direction in which, um, as an institution collectively. Um, both schools are heading towards, so the middle school, um, trajectory seems very clear in terms of. Offering that high school readiness, um, those opportunities and building that sense of community, which is really. Important in terms of like the sense of belonging work that we know needs to happen in middle school. Um, so I agree, like, what are ways that we can have students be ambassadors in terms of. Showing how they're engaging in the learning, um, but also doing, um. More of that storytelling, either through like tabling, um. You know, student interviews, panel discussions, et cetera. And then ways that, um, the high school students can bridge into the middle school space. Uh, as a way of like previewing, uh, it's a great school, we really wanna build, um. Our community by having you here as early as, um, s- late sixth grade or seventh grade, so. It sort of creates that pipeline.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, what you said, um, you should resonate some in a whole host of areas, and then I'm thinking about. Another neighboring school, a peer school of ours, that is now doing some work. Strategic planning-wise and, and, and really thinking about the story of, of a student, uh, or of like the, the, the student that. Um, uh, experiences all that the school offers in its fullest form. And us making that come to life too in real ways for our kids and families as of eighth grade, and then throughout high school, as a way of kind of giving them inspiration and direction. Um, I think in our first year and second year, we did it more of that, and, and I think we, we haven't made that evident in the way that is possible, and so I get excited by that. Because that, that excites both kids' families as well as our team, this is what we're, this is what we're contributing to, um, and that's fulfilling.
Um, Josh, one thing that we talked about on the call that I'm not seeing here, I really think you need to start taking a survey of your eighth grade families and kids and parents.
Yeah.
And an online survey or whatever it is, asking them what is important to them for the ninth grade.
Yep.
And deliver on that, because you don't have that feedback yet, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have bits and pieces, but not in a structured format.
Yeah, I'd extend to say our seventh graders too, maybe even our sixth graders, so that as we start the conversation.
All, all the way through it, yep, all the way through, but really focus on the eighth grade, why are you making a move here? To something that's forty-two minutes away, or whatever, you know?
Hmm.
Well, and don't ask that question, obviously, but you, you know, what is important to you, and, and then figure out a way to address that.
Hmm, yeah, no, thank you for reminding, um, me of that, that Jim, that she show up here too, and I think what we're gonna do. Now, is, um, you know, sir, I think the survey data may work for sixth and seventh grade, particularly during roundtables where we're, where we're. Ensuring kind of a high response rate, we'd like to get that data sooner for our eighth grade, and then we have plans of communicating with families. Who may have other options and making sure that. They're either committed to us or not before then moving forward, and so those conversations are meant to be. Um, live and intimate and honest, and then getting some feedback too, so we feel like it's almost just like.
I'm talking about something else, I'm talking about something where you have some online thing where the parents go and look at whatever the performance, you know, report cards were. Just do that, just do that and get, do a broad survey of all the students, all the parents. Do it at some point during the year, just to get that feedback, doesn't have to be in person, in fact, in person might skew it, right? Instead of getting nice to you, sitting, sitting right in front of them, and just come up with some thoughts of what you think's important. And, and focused on eighth and ninth, what you think is important, and have them do it anonymously or whatever, make sure that you're. Align, the high school is aligned with what these people want i- in the eighth grade.
And Jim, you're talking about for, uh, geared towards the parents directly, right, not the kids?
I think, I think, I don't know who the ultimate decision-maker is here, but I, I imagine they have a big say, you know, so I would do both.
We, we found in our network that it's the kids that have the bigger say, that, it's the, the, what we've found is that. Just for some reason, parents are just very deferential to their child in terms of high school decisions, so we changed our strategy. From targeting to parents to targeting to students, and that has made an impact.
Yeah.
And just do an online survey, we do it all the time, you know, you can, somebody, Chris could whip it up in fifteen minutes and just blast it out and have him do it.
The, uh, not to pile things on top of each other, but the other thing that I'm, I'm curious about is, do you guys do, is there some sort of. Exit interview of sorts for, for folks that don't?
We talked about, yeah, you gotta do that. I think you're doing that somewhat, right?
Uh, he, when, when a student withdraws from our school, we do that, have we done that rigorously among our entire eighth grade each year? I don't think so, so I think there's some work to do.
Yeah, that's kind of where it hits me, it might be impactful, specifically for these eighth graders that are going to all these different schools, it's like, hey. You know, to your point, what do you, what attracts you to all these schools, why'd you decide to go to Benjamin Bannaker or wherever?
Yeah, Josh, this came up like three months ago or whatever, when Chris showed that spreadsheet, you have the data of what schools these kids are applying to. And it just seems like you should ask them at that point, before they accept someplace else. Why are you, what do you see in these, you know, what are you seeing here? And then you can have a more direct conversation about, here's what you're missing with the Unity High School experience. And just, just solicit that feedback, because you have, you know exactly where they applied. And, and you've got maybe two months to sort of influence that decision, and so you just gotta get on it right then.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't disagree with you, Jim, but I think you need to get on it a lot before then.
Oh, no question, absolutely, yeah, no, this is kind of, da- damage is almost done at that point when they're applying elsewhere. I think we need to align what they want, and that's maybe first day of eighth grade. What they want out of ninth grade and build ninth grade to that, if we're missing something, right?
Yeah, I think the other thing we talked about on Friday was just that, you know, um. Kids and families wanna feel special and kind of exclusive, and we have to work. Within our system in our school about. Work in creating programs within the school that provide that and do that, given that we are. The default school or seen as that, because all of our students in the eighth grade have an automatic seat at our high school, whereas at other schools. They're admitted, and so they feel as if, man, I'm admitted and perhaps others are not, I feel special, and they've got a couple of programs that are kind of cool, so. Let me think about this school, because I wanna feel special. And so us thinking about our programming within the school and special programs that we do offer. That are then perceived as, um, exclusive, um, uh, unique and about. Kids' talents and their promise as human beings being kind of what we wanna bring tonight, and I think in looking at the slide in front of you. You're seeing some of the ways in which other schools are doing that, where we, um, haven't fully kind of fulfilled the potential there. So I, I, I think with that, good conversation on Friday, good conversation here, this is, this is a focus area for us as a school, as we think about strategic planning. And we'll say a bit more about that momentarily. And, um, it's also an area of development, an area where we're gonna need resources to kind of make this happen in a way that, that, um. I think is on par with some of the bigger schools, as well as some of the schools that already have some of the machinery up to do that, and so. Report out on development, uh, here's the agenda that, um, we talked about on Monday, I'm gonna bring to you just headlines and updates, see if a sense of what the work is involved. Over the past, um, uh, month, and then where we are development-wise with goals and current state, and then what actions we're doing over the course of the month. Um, to be successful. Um, Ram and Sal chime in at any point in time if I'm not, uh, uh, hitting on, on the right things for this report out. Um, what you see in front of you is what we've done the past month, and so, um. There've been a couple of foundations that we've been in touch with, I wanna thank Ram for introducing us to the Cohen Foundation. Uh, and so we are submitting for a grant there now, that's in process, and we'll have that submitted by the end of the week, but that's been a couple of months in the making, so. Again, uh, Ram, thank you for your continued, um, active work there. Uh, we had a conversation recently, um, through another contact with the Robinhood Foundation, um, and that, uh, was a good conversation, that was last week, and so met with their. Their representatives, and we talked about possibilities, post-secondary education came up, um, as an area of interest for them, and so I think that was an introductory meeting. Where I'd like to continue to foster that over time. We also applied for a local grant with, um, a local real estate, uh, group in, uh, Brooklyn, um, and so applied for a grant that we've received the past two years. Um, we've received this grant in joint effort with PS forty-four, uh, the past two years, and this year, just given our needs, we're gonna apply for it separately. They will also apply, but, uh, we've got some distinct needs that don't necessarily, um, have us duly benefiting from the same thing. We had some auditorium upgrades over the past two years, and we shared the auditorium, so it made sense to jointly apply, we're looking at some other things such as. For example, reading interventions for the coming year, and so we're gonna apply for that separately, and so we'll see how that goes. Um, in addition, we applied for the same grant through, uh, summer boost that we've been successful in applying for the past few years. That's for roughly a hundred thousand dollars, and that pays for our middle school enrichment and summer programming, so. Um, excited to put that to use this year, we expect to receive that, and, um, just other work, we've had UAC members step up. Um, offer some, some insights and feedback on our website, um, and homepage, as well as our profile. Um, and so some pro bono work happening, uh, in upgrading our website, as well as some free input and feedback on profiling. Uh, and ways of, um, increasing our brand and identity, uh, within the community happening. Finally, uh, we've met, uh, over the past month with three potential major donors and had really good conversations, and so. This takes some time, but it's happening and, and looking to kind of bring additional forces into our, our collective efforts, and then. Uh, we built out kind of a system, um, that we discussed on Monday with the government, uh, Development Committee on kind of like how we. Show gratitude over the course of the year to those who are continually giving to, um, have them, uh, support us, um, perennially. So, that's the work happening, Sal, Ram, would you add anything else that we discussed that, uh, would make up, um, what has been a pretty active month?
Can't remember if maybe if, uh, last month, it was last month's update, uh. Can't remember if maybe if last month, it was last month's update, uh, of the donation. System, the software, we had a pretty antiquated system previous to that, but that's all been updated and. A lot better than it was, easier to use and share and so on.
Yep. Yep. So that's with the process for donating through our website and then the ways in which we're tracking it using some software. So also there, thanks for that, Sal. Uh, see, I have a sense of standing right now. Here's where we are. Uh, we have, um. Raised two hundred eight thousand dollars through insider and supporter donations thus far this year. Um, so you'll see that's in the light green, um. Table, and so we've got some work to do from, uh, an insider standpoint. We've raised sixty of the one fifty that we have, uh, as a goal from a supporter donations aspect, which are just folks who aren't directly in the mix, but have supported the school. Um, in prior years or who are or who are new, um, just under a hundred and fifty thousand. On our way to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, goal. From a grant perspective, it's been dry privately. I've talked about a couple of possibilities. We feel good about one of them in particular, so we're looking to make some gains there. And so. Um, we've lost some ground over the past couple of months. I'll say that with regard to development, and so let me give you a sense of where we where we want to go and what we see as the plan of action moving forward. And so on the right, I'm going to go through just a bit of math here. And so our goal for the year is to raise five thirty five. That's ambitious, but like, uh, it's our target. Thus far, we raised two hundred and eight. That leaves us with three hundred twenty seven. So that's where the difference is right now as we move into the the tail end of the year. Our best path forward as we see it is to secure one of the. Grants through a foundation that we are applying for, um, that may be up to a hundred thousand dollars. If that happens, we go from three twenty seven to. Two twenty seven, two thirty. And then from there, the work isn't looking to secure another hundred thousand dollars, um, through past and new donors. And so that's the work and kind of communicate communicating out with those who, uh, know the school well, or those who perhaps. Should know the school well. And so that's where a lot of the effort takes place in the rolling up of sleeves. So if we do that. We'll end the year close to what our ambitious goal was. It will be a year in which we've had more donors and more action. And perhaps more in funding than we've received in the past. There have been a couple of years in which we've had one or two donors really be generous with their giving. Um, this would be a year in which I think we mature. And so I feel good about that. We wouldn't meet our goal, but we'll be in a good place with regard to budget and year end. And so that's the that's the work right now. Um, uh, looking to obtain a hundred thousand dollars in funding over the course of the next two months. Actions to get us there. We've got three or four, no, five different foundations we're going to be actively applying to over the course of this month. Um, I'll continue with the conversations I've been having with, um, with, uh, prospective donors, um, and goals for this year. And then beyond that, um, just from a monthly basis, like there are things we want to do systematically as a school and raising our 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 capacities. Um, philanthropically, and so monthly work is just reaching out and thanking those who have given to the school. We've had some ideas about charity birthday fundraisers and want to pilot pilot that this month. We also would like to hold our first Jeffersonian dinner, which is just meant to be kind of an informal, small group, think fifteen people or so. Affair in which you talk about some specific area of the school that people have a common interest in, and then ways in which you make it happen. So I'd like to do that in May. I'm looking for perhaps someone to raise a hand and host an event like that. Um, specific areas could be debate, could be athletics, could be the performing arts, could be around financial literacy. Any of these things would be really important to bring to our kids as we raise profile at the high school. And so, um, this is about us, um, again, developing our muscles here and they're they're new. Finally, we've got roundtables happening in June, want to make this or roll out the red carpet affair and look to honor some people who've given the school in the past and. And have them, uh, meet our amazing kids and families, see our kids, uh, uh, present, uh, in a pretty impressive way. And, um, have it be just an inspirational event as it's been for others here on this call tonight, as well as others who've taken part. And so, um. Those are the things we're looking to do over the course of this month, moving into May. And so it's an ambitious month from a development perspective, but we need it. So. That's where things are. Uh, are there questions? And or Sal, Ram, would you add anything?
Nothing on my end.
Cool, cool. So let's move things forward. Last report out from a. Committee. Um, ba ba ba, is this it? Cool. Um, so the last report out is coming from here. It is. No, it's not. Uh, it's missing for some weird reason. So the last report out is coming from the Governance Committee, uh, we met on Wednesday afternoon last of, uh, the last week. Um, and so I think there, um, is this it? Yeah, here it is. Uh, here are the things that we reported out on and discussed. Full agenda. I'm going to quickly share with this board an early view of a draft strategic plan, specifically big goals and objectives. Have you have a sense of that? There's more work to do, and then I'll share out quickly a few items that, um, the committee's been working on that I think benefit the full board. And, um, our collective work from a governance perspective. I'll then end up talking about, um, where things are. In April, rounding out the year into June, and, um, the governance work will be doing. So, um, as. I may have described, we may have described during our last meeting, um, we're now working on a three-year strategic plan for the school. Um, there is, there are a number of benefits to having such a plan intact. We typically have done this annually. And are now looking to kind of think longer term about school, which I think offers a shared clarity among board, school, community supporters. And direction over multiple years. It gives us kind of a compass or a focus point and an accountability point to, um, to work toward together. And I think with that, there's a higher likelihood of success and seeing those goals realized with those things in form. So with that, we're building out something, um, that, uh, would give us that direction and offer these benefits. Um, in a similar vein, we've got our SED visit coming up in May, and one of the questions posed out by our authorizer is. Do you have a strategic plan in place and can you share it? So, um, this is a good move for us. Given that, there's been some conversations with, uh, the committee over the past two months in some good direction. Um. The slide in front of you gives you a sense of some of the things we're thinking about with regard to goals of school within the strategic plan. And so the plan would offer big goals, big broad goals and objectives over the course of three years, as well as some benchmarks and strategies to see those through. What you see in front of you right now are just the goals and objectives, where as we think about a three-year plan. Our mission and our charter within New York State, there are three big buckets of school that represent progress and success, one being about. Accelerated academic growth for all of our kids, middle school, high school, graduation, college. Another would be around just providing a really strong school climate and sense of pride in the school. And so you'll see some ways in which we're getting at that object objectives wise below. And then third. Us building as a nonprofit, a robust organizational health. And that just means coherence, clarity, common mission and and talent. So some ways in which we're getting at that, you'll see, um, listed here. For example, um, underneath academic growth, uh, one of our objectives would be to empower each and every one of our kids in grades six through eight with the skills, the knowledge, the exposure and habits essential for success in high school, that next step. And so off of this, we'll have benchmarks that allow for us to measure our success there as well as key strategies. Say, two to three to five strategies for each of these that get us there that we feel, um, uh, well positioned us to see these objectives and goals through. Another example of this under school climate and pride would be. Us building one of the most highly acclaimed extracurricular programs as a small but mighty school among independent charters in New York City. We talked about raising our profile as a school and the benefits of that. Hence, one of our goals here would be about seeing some of those, um, flagship programs, for example, um, fully developed. And leading the way and building a sense of pride in the school. Finally, with regard to org health, an example of an objective there would be us strengthening our fundraising efforts and strategic partnerships. Um, as a small school, we should think creatively about the ways in which we partner with other nonprofits. Other entities, et cetera. And so that brings resources, it brings experiences, it brings people to our school. And I think it creates pathways for kids to really thrive and accelerate once they find their their area, their area of, um, of specialty. So I give this to you tonight, just as a N F Y on here's where we are right now in thinking about our strategic plan for three years. We've got goals, we've got objectives. It's now about building out. Benchmarks for each of the three years as well as key strategies we will depend on and employ to see them through. Ultimately, this plan will guide us to, um, uh, continued growth and success in our second decade. Um, as well as allow for us to communicate it out to different audiences. And so it'll look a little different depending on the audience we're looking to communicate this with, whether it's our authorizer. Our supporters, our team internally here, et cetera. And so, um. Uh, and so that's that's where things stand. Um, members of the Governance Committee, if you add anything that I'm missing or feel for around something else. Um, uh, please do so now. Uh, members of the board who weren't. At this meeting last Wednesday, if you've got questions, let's, uh, open it up here.
I guess, fun, this is a kind of a tangent, but have you surveyed? The alumni who graduated college to see what careers they've pursued?
We've got one, one cohort right now that would have graduated. They graduated in four years, um, and we have not surveyed them yet.
It might be worth looking at.
Hmm.
So I'm just thinking if, um, you know, it's the it's the college thing, which I think is the right focus, but. As we all know, you know, colleges become so expensive and the debt burden's crazy. If if we found out that. Just to pick a career path, twenty percent had gone into nursing or some version of that, which doesn't require a four-year degree. Um. That might influence how we. You know, if we could graduate them into that from unity and forego the student debt burden of going through four years of college, just to land at the same place. I don't know. I'd be curious to see where they landed, you know, where they. Worked on it.
That's brilliant. I mean, and and as a as a similar example, we do have, um. A program called H Prep, which allows for kids as. Ninth through eleventh graders to experience, uh, working in hospitals and learning under, um, folks who work in the medical field. Donating their time, getting paid in the summer. We've got five students that take part in that now. If we found, as you've said, alumni moving to that field. Um, in ways that, um, that are greater than what we currently offer, we should have looked to expand that out.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's an example of both a flagship program, um, as well as a strategic partnership. And so. Having that data would inform that more confidently.
And then the the other question, and we talked about this a bit the other day, but. The extracurricular thing is interesting to me because I was thinking about it after we had a conversation. I think back to my, you know, my experience of N equals one here. Um, the, um. Uh, the school I went to, you know, I was kind of at the advanced program. They put us all into little buckets. I was in that group and that. So there was a group of maybe thirty of us who moved through roughly all the same classes together. We were kind of on a little thing. I would say five to ten percent of that group participated in, um, team sports. I was one of them, but there weren't many others, and those were the highest performers. So the highest performers did not really value the extracurriculars. The, among the lower performers. Um. I think in academically. Um. I think it was real value. You could see like during first samples of the football team during the football season. There's a high, a heightened level of discipline. Across the board. You, nobody was fooling around after school, after football practice. You you would be shamed if you went out and. Got stoned or whatever after school, right? Because you just didn't do that. You were part of a team, et cetera. When the football season ended, that kind of ended too, right? So I get. I get the 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 benefit of having these programs. From that point of view for certain people, right? And but I I'm just. Curious, and this goes to that survey, maybe that you that you, uh, do, maybe your your highest performers at the middle school don't value. Extracurriculars as much as sort of your lower performers. And there's value, there's, don't get me wrong, there's a huge amount of value there for for everybody to participate in these team sports and and, you know, the clubs and whatnot. But I'd be curious to see what your kids say. Your middle school kids say about that. And and which ones value which. Um, but I don't know if there's any data on this and anybody's done any research on it, but my anecdotal, again, N equals one here is that. Uh, the high performers really didn't do this, care about this sort of stuff. But everybody else. Which was the vast majority of the kids really did, and it was very valuable to them. So anyway, something to think about.
Yeah. Other thoughts here? Yeah, Jim, I can say that like among among an N of fifteen, the varsity basketball team this year, um. I had I had kids who were really struggling academically in the fall, who picked things up during the winter season because they wanted to be a part of the team. Um, and so there was that subgroup within the team. I had some kids that had really high GPAs coming in the season, and they just maintained it. And socially, um, I think they they benefited from being a part of the team in ways that if they weren't in the team, they wouldn't have those same social dynamics or interactions. And so that was good for them. Um. And then some kids, you know, somewhere in the middle were like, uh, uh, some of their their skills around, um. Being on time, you know, and 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 just having taking responsibility for actions. Um, or being able to communicate with someone during a difficult or challenging or frustrating time and developing those skills, which are incredibly important in the workplace. So.
Yeah, no, I, hey, I'm a huge fan. I'm still, I'm just curious if you'd see if you did a survey, if you'd see a difference.
Yeah.
You know, about. You know, how different kids academically inclined or whatever, however you want to phrase it. Respond to, um. And then and enhanced after school offering at the school, if that's the direction we need to go.
Yeah. 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 Good stuff. So that's where we are now, uh, more to update and 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 I'm seeking to have a draft by May for, um, for, uh, review, uh, by, um, this board. So. That's where things stand now. Uh, I'll move us into, um, other general topics coming from that meeting, just some takeaways that I think are relevant for the full board. This is a governance committee. So I, um, the annual performance review of the executive director, that's me, has taken place, um, last, uh, I guess a couple of weeks ago, and now. An evaluation form is being written up and prepared, um, for, um, uh, this, uh, for the Governance Committee and the board. Um, in addition to that, uh, we, uh, I think Misha, your forms are submitted to state, and so we're now awaiting a response or approval for your formal membership to board, and Rob, we're working on paperwork with with you. Um, I've got a couple of other folks who have shown some interest who are not on the board that may be, um, intrigued by being a part of the board. And so I'll say more about that, uh, as we get more serious and maybe during the executive session tonight. Um. Marion and members of her team have created a one-page draft protocol for, um, on the onboarding process and nomination process for new members. And so. That's under review by the committee before bringing that before the board next month. And so thank you, uh, Marion and and, um. And Davis for for doing that work.
Yeah, I think it's only with you, Josh, I think. I don't think it's gone to the committee, so.
Yeah, no, I I got it. I was just wondering, I was kind of stuck on next steps. My assumption, Josh, is that you were going to go through because. First of all, it's really well done. I gotta say, whoever did it, excellent work. Um, there is a a cup, there, there's one question in there, and there's a, a, I forget the section. There's a section where that needs to be filled out. Yes, I was, I think it's best if you take a first cut rather than just, you know, everybody throws their comments in at the same time.
Yeah, I'll do that, though.
Yeah, we also have the board write-up, right? There's two things, right? There's, there's an existing. Board write-up. And then Josh was asking about a. More of a process like. You know, how do we refresh the board and make sure that we have all the right. Competencies. So I put something together, and that's just an email. So I don't know whether it's made that way. It's where around Josh, maybe you can take a pass at the second one. Fill out whatever was missing from the first one and then resend both maybe to the committee and then. I I think it's not going to take a ton of time, but it would be helpful for members of the committee to read those things before they go back to the board.
Yep. Yeah, that makes sense, um, as next steps. So, yeah, I I have two, two separate emails, one that was. Shared with the committee and one that's in my inbox that I'll then share with the committee. So, um, uh, that is clear. Uh, and then, uh, I think there was, there was a review of bylaws recently, um, by, uh, Marion and company. Um, and so I think there may be a couple of minor things that we will add to bylaws moving.
I think it was just the investment policy. I think we just need to.
Yep. Yep. And we need a simple investment policy that we can then use and adapt. And so that'll be something that I think we can probably, um, look to approve in May and then, um, have it be the bylaws we, we, we abide by going into the coming year.
Yeah, Mary Jan's fine.
Cool. And so, yeah, those are, those are, uh, some of the areas of discussion with the committee, um, to benefit the full, um, inner workings of the board. I think with that, there are three items for approval tonight. Um, and so Jim, I'll, I'll hand things over to you.
Okay. So the first item is the names from the prior meeting, Ms. From prior meeting, has, um, any questions or comments on those? Okay.
No, thank you, Jeanette, for reviewing.
Yeah, everybody turn their screens on, all in favor. See, I'm seeing hands. Okay, good. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next item, Josh.
So we received a grant from, uh, the Valentes Foundation, um, last year to upgrade the lighting in our auditorium. That was for twenty-five thousand dollars. We now have a quote from Robert Stark Lighting. That was a group that was suggested to us by the DOE. This is in a DOE space, and so there are restrictions as to which vendors can work within DOE spaces, Robert Stark being one. So, um, we have a grant, we have now, um, uh, an invoice, which is within dollars of twenty-five thousand dollars in the amount of the grant to make the lighting upgrades happen. And so we did reach out to other vendors, uh, have three bids. This is the one we feel is best. And this is the group we used last year for the initial upgrade. So they're familiar to us. So the, the, um, ask of the board tonight is to approve, um, this invoice, which again is paid for ultimately through, um, the grant we received and we have received that funding already.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Um, transfer funding from Nylaf to Nyclash.
This was an item that was discussed with the A F C on Friday and then recommended to bring the full board tonight. Kristen, if you want to say a few words about what this is about?
Yep. Um, so just in summary, uh, the fund Nylaf was owned by one company and they've merged with another company who has their own version of Nylaf, Nylaf called Nyclash. Um, and because of the merger, they want to remove, move down to one fund, which they have elected to go with the Nyclash fund. So they're asking all Nylaf customers to have a board resolution, similar to the board resolution we passed when we started Nylaf, to move over to the Nyclash fund and that will be effective, uh, July first. So, um, and I did ask for, I don't have it yet, but, um, the specific investments that Nyclash has, I've been told they are similar to the Nylaf, um, funds, but I haven't gotten that, um, document just yet. Any questions? Okay. So we just need the approval for the board resolution to be signed.
Yeah, Kristen, just in, just, I mean, it's kind of obvious, but if you see a problem when you see the list of funds, you come back to us and, you know, we, we decide what to do.
Yeah, I will share that out with you as soon as I get it. Um, and we have time to actually sign the resolution, so we can have you approve it today and we won't sign it until I actually get that document.
Yeah, I, I think we're in short-term pressure reasons. We should stay that way if, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it'll still have the hundred percent liquidity like we have right now. Um, so, yep.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Thank you. Okay.
And with that, we move to public comment tonight.
We're good there?
We are good there. And then we move into, uh, just a preview of the next meeting, which is May fourteenth, believe it or not. Um, it does say in person here, um, we met in March and so I think originally we maybe had this as an in-person meeting. And so, uh, I would be okay, would certainly welcome hosting folks in person, people are able to do it. If not, I would also be okay, given what I think we'll discuss, having this be a Zoom meeting next month too. Any preferences among the board?
The calendar.
I'll be away, so I wouldn't be able to do in person.
Yeah, I'm out. I'm traveling.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that, we've got two, uh, votes for, um, a Zoom meeting. Anyone opposed to that? Cool. So this will be remote. Items on the agenda will be, uh, a second go at the, at the budget in May, um, given the next steps that Kristen laid out. Um, we'll provide some forecasts on high school graduation, as well as offer some updates on college acceptances next month. Strategic planning, we talked about that in detail tonight. I'll bring you back a new, um, version of that. Uh, and then we'll be sharing out just updates on where we are with recruitment, enrollment, et cetera. Uh, updates on development and then updates on where we are with the renovations of five eighty-four Driggs. And so another busy meeting in May.
Yeah, Josh, um, on the strategic plan, is your plan to bring it to all the relevant committees between now and next meeting? I imagine they should be involved in setting the K P I's, right? I mean, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, no, you make a good point. So in thinking about goal one around accelerated academic growth, certainly the S L C should look at the K P I's and benchmarks there and offer kind of like their input and, and make it, make it stronger. Um, org health, maybe that's the governance committee. Um, and there may be some overlap there. That's kind of a broad topic. And then with culture and climate, I can see that also being something that, um, the S L C looks at too.
Right. Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that does make sense during committee meetings and then bring it to the full board in May. And I think it'll just be a draft at that point in time.
Right. I think, I think it's important to get it right. So if it takes, you know, a, an extra month to get something that we're happy with, I don't think that's a problem.
Good stuff. Okay.
Sorry, I just have one update. I wanted to, we didn't get to talk about it at the A F C and just real quick, if I could. Just wanted the board and A F C to know that we did have our first official drawdown of the construction bun funds. So we have transferred approximately six hundred and seventy thousand out of the B N Y funds into our Morgan Stanley account. Um, I know we've been trying to get that done and that has finally occurred. Um, so we're happy to report that that has occurred as of today.
And, and Kristen, that's to cover expenses that were already paid or?
Yep, yep, absolutely. Yep. So those, those costs that we had up fronted, um, with our Morgan Stanley funds.
Okay, but good to know it works.
Yep.
Okay. Should we go to executive, executive session?
Yeah. So I guess, um, Kristen, we'll, we'll adjourn now from the public meeting.